All right, it's ten thirty seven AM. We will begin this work session of Lake County Board of County Commissioners. First on the agenda today is overview of the Chafee Housing Trust and the services they provide to Lake County. It will be led by Kristi Galarda, Grants and Operation Manager, Chafee County Trust, and...
Reid McCullough, the Executive Director.
Reid McCullough, nice to meet you, Reid.
Likewise, thanks for the opportunity to be here.
Absolutely. All right.
Thank you. I want to take advantage of the opportunity here to, you know, understand that you guys are no longer new commissioners, but this may be new information to you, give you a big picture of who we are, why we're here, what we do, and get back right down to the finer points, so...
You can sit here, Kristi.
Go to the next one. So, give you a little background of why we started and how we perceive ourselves. Back in two thousand and seven, there were folks in the community in Chafee County who said, these are school board folks, small employers, and they're looking at their workforce saying rents are going up, home prices are going through the roof, and soon, normally, it'll afford a home that works for them. And if they lose that workforce, then it's going to be detrimental to the entire community. The two thousand and seven housing needs assessment and the two thousand and sixteen housing needs assessment showed that fifteen percent of the workforce that earned less than fifty thousand dollars disappeared in that time. And it was a place to lie, people with higher incomes who came in and became residents and not workers. So, perfect data point to show what's been happening to our communities. So, looking at how can we get employees, give them the opportunity to get housing security, to get ownership, to build equity, and to build multi-generational wealth. That's the core of what we do. So, it's not dissimilar to affordable rental housing, which generally houses people who are here for who knows how long, but are just getting here and establishing themselves. The crass term in the economic development world is jobs need a place to sleep at night. We like to think of ourselves as building community by giving people the opportunity to anchor in that community. So, with that in mind, we started what's called a Community Land Trust. And some way to look at it, we hold land in trust for the community. So, when we build a project, we own the underlying land. We will either act as a general contractor and go with the vertical construction. We'll hire subcontractors or we'll hire another GC to do the work. And then, we see the project through to the finish and the sales of those homes. Sometimes, if the opportunity arises to work with a developer and we can get the pricing right, then we'll do it latch key where they'll get to certificate of occupancy, and then we'll acquire those units. We pledge to their lender to take out those units as COA. So, two different ways that we can do business. We hold title to the underlying land in perpetuity. And we are a community-owned organization, as we like to put it. Our Board of Directors reflects the community. It is required to have one-third of the board seats dedicated to homeowners or low-income representatives, and less than one-third to government seats. So, that's anybody who works for, elected by, appointed by government. That includes teachers. So, we're trying to keep the representation heavy on the people who we serve and their lived experience, and make sure that on the government side, we have representation, but it's not overbearing. And that last third is just general community members. So, when we sell a home, we use a ground lease that says that you can have your home on our land for ninety-nine years. Similar to a deed restriction, that ground lease has embedded in it all the things that you want to see. So, when the home gets sold, who qualifies to buy that home? Same, just like the person who bought it, they should look at like that same household however many years in the future. When they sell the home, what do they walk away with? So, we use a market-based approach where twenty-five percent of the market-based appreciation goes to the seller. So, if they bought a house for two hundred thousand dollars and it was valued at three hundred thousand, ten years down the line, we get appraisal, it's valued at four hundred thousand dollars. So, that house value went up a hundred thousand dollars in that time period. They walk away with twenty-five grand. That's their share of the appreciation. The other seventy-five stays in the house, doesn't go anywhere, it's just embedded in the home. And the next home buyer pays what they paid plus that appreciation. So, originally, that first family paid two hundred, the next family pays two twenty-five. But that's ten years later. So, the market's doing this, and our home prices are doing this. So, they're homeowners in every sense. They maintain their home, the appraisal will reflect that. They get all the luxuries of homeownership or the privileges of being able to have their domain within their household. And they can realize some of that market-based appreciation if the market goes up. And if the market goes down, just like any homeowner, they also, you know, lose on that, on the value of their home. So, it's homeownership in every way that we can do, but it's accessible to people who are priced out of the market. So, years ago in Chafee County, and Leadville's already there, your typical workers, especially in the tourism basin, they can't afford a home here, they can barely afford rent, and they're going to end up moving on unless we provide them an opportunity for housing stability, for ownership, building equity, and that multi-generational wealth building. So, that's the big picture of why we exist. If you want to go to the next slide. Typically, in a year, we have about a hundred and thirty clients who get involved in our services. So, Claudia Paulskill, she's a bilingual HUD certified housing counselor, and she receives that first call, and she starts working with the client to get them on the road to homeownership. But it's a matter of giving them the counseling and the coaching to do it themselves. So, she teaches them how to pull their credit history, how to fix their credit history, how to apply for a mortgage. All the things that they need handholding to do, because more often than not, our home buyers are not from families who've owned homes before, and someone's taught them, oh, this is how mortgage works. This is what taxes do, all the important things about homeownership. They're learning for the first time. And so, Claudia works them through that process with monthly webinars or one-on-one counseling in English and in Spanish to get them through to that homeownership and at the end of the process.
Let me jump in real quick right there. In the first development he did, he realized really quickly, it's not like a build-a-dream situation. It's not like if you build it, they will come, right? We are, we're trying to serve folks who are really disenfranchised from the ability to buy. They feel like they'll never, ever, ever be able to buy. So, we have to persuade them to even talk to us, and then we have to hold their hand through the entire process. We have a really high attrition rate in this program. Lots of people don't achieve homeownership, or they choose to buy on the open market. That doesn't matter to us, because the financial literacy and homebuyer readiness services that we are providing is holistically helping the community become more financially strong, more resilient, so that they can survive things like snapping, pulled out from underneath them.
Thank you for including that detail. So, today, we've got forty-two homes built. Typically, when we get a project done, it takes the vertical construction being done. People can come and touch it, walk through it, get a feel for it before they really commit to purchasing. So, people ask, well, what's your waitlist look like? Well, we've got a pipeline, and there's a lot of people in that pipeline. There's a number of folks who want to buy in the rail yard, they're in process. Until we get that house done, typically, they don't want to sign a contract or they're not ready to totally commit. We finished two projects in Salata this year. We've sold eight homes. We've got a ninth home on the way to being sold. So, kind of reflects that same history is a year ago, we didn't have buyers locked in. And once they saw it and got in it, they, those homes sold. So, that's what we're hoping for the rail yard. I've got thirty homes in development, including the twelve in the rail yard, fourteen in Buta Visca, and then we're looking to acquire an apartment, a fourplex, down in Poncha Springs. So, we can acquire single-family homes if the seller is willing to work with us on price, and then we bring grants to the table. And this is a new funding opportunity that we just received last week. So, we have twelve scattered site homes. So, a single homeowner wanted to sell to the right person, we could come in, bring some funding, buy that price down, and then work with the buyer to get them in that home.
Okay, that's awesome, because I've been ta, we've been talking about that for years. And I, it's been like Kristi and I are good at dreaming, homeownership projects dreaming. And I feel like that is something that I've been really curious about and wanting to exist. You're realizing a real dream of mine, Reid, that's so cool.
And you're the first in the community to hear about this.
Wow.
How common is it for someone to want to work with you and sell at a lower price? It seems uncommon to me.
We've lost two opportunities, because we couldn't get the funding to the table fast enough.
Totally.
One of them here in Leadville.
Yep.
And so, and this, we've been working with the state, saying, you know, rural communities have a different issue, different scale. They don't want to process an application for less than six units of one project. So, I couldn't apply for one house. So, finally, this funding has been, it's been in the works for two years, and they just, we just had our state housing board meeting last week, and they approved a whole slew of projects across the state, and they're winning the fundings. So, the key is that price, the seller has to have good intentions.
Yeah.
If they want to get the best market value, then they're going to help prices. But we can bring seventy thousand dollars to the table, plus fifty thousand dollars, up to fifty thousand dollars in down payment assistance. So, that right there can buy down the prices pretty significantly.
I feel like people were already doing that in this community, just person to person. That has been going on for years and years and years. So, to actually make it more of a program is huge.
It's my biggest success in housing.
I'm, my, correct. This is so cool.
Well, congrats to Kristi for writing that grant and successfully getting it through. Big win for us, so. So, that's just one of the many ways that we are trying to approach this issue and to bring housing to the market for our buyer pool. We're putting out, ourselves out there, you know, with quite a bit of risk, amount of risk. So, when we finish the rail yard, for example, we're going to have empty units and a mortgage to pay until we fill those units. And there are some strict rules with the state that say that some of those units we can rent, but three of the units we cannot rent, period. They will sit empty until they're sold. So, we're working hard to make sure we sell those three units right away, because otherwise, we're just absorbing that cost. But the other ones, we can rent to qualified buyers, hoping that they start the process and eventually buy the unit that they're renting. So, every angle we can find to get people through that long period of figuring out, oh, wait, I can qualify for homeownership, I can actually do this here, and getting them through the door and keys at hand, that's our commitment, is that long-term view.
So, then, do you work, do you act as the property manager then while it's in rental?
Yep.
Okay, cool.
Exactly. Yeah, and we've been hiring staff to do exactly that. And now, we have two staff members, Kristi, and then Keisha Maserati is also working for us on the administration. So, we have folks in the community to help us with that. We've also partnered with the Chafee Housing Authority, because they use TurboTennant, and they're doing the rental management. And we've been having conversations with Becky Longberg about doing something similar here.
Awesome.
Forthcoming.
Great.
So, how we do what we do, I mean, I've described quite a bit of this. Some more things about the ground lease that are really important to understand. Foreclosure is a concern ever since the Great Recession. Chafee, I'm sorry, Community Land Trust Homes during that period were thirteen times less likely to go to foreclosure. Why is that? Because we have a close relationship with our buyers and our homeowners. When we complete a project, we have a condominium owners association. And we keep a seat on that as long as we own units there. And then, we maintain presence at all their meetings, teaching them how to run a COA, watching over their budget, making sure that they understand their responsibilities, so that it's preserved for the long term. But in that ground lease, there are provisions where we can intervene. So, if someone goes to foreclosure or starts down that path with delinquency, we'll get notice. We also have a twenty-five dollar a month ground lease fee that they pay to us. What's the first thing they stop paying? The lowest, easiest one, the twenty-five bucks. So, we know right away, and we also offer a ten-dollar deed filed so that we get notice, so...
That's the canary in the coal mine.
The canary in the coal mine. So, we can step in and we can acquire the house from them. We can make their payments on their behalf, and we can recuperate those later at a future sale. All these different ways to make sure that we preserve that community asset for the long, long term. And we're committed to a hundred-year sort of horizon line. Hundred years from now, who owns the land under those rail yard units? If that building lasts a hundred years, which I certainly hope it does with good maintenance, but if, let's say, it has to come down, who owns the land? If you do a simple deed restriction, that's lost to whoever that current owner is at that future date. And so, by owning that land, we get to determine what's the future highest and best use of that land. It could be housing, it could be school, it could be some other community asset. But by having that land and a local Board of Directors dictating what happens with that land, in perpetuity, we'll have pieces of property all over the county, in both counties, that are preserved for affordable housing. Imagine if we'd done this a hundred years ago. We would have sprinkled across the community these affordable parcels of land that would be recycling over and over. So, we're starting that process now. We'll see how it goes in a hundred years.
One of the things I think is really cool about the work is not, there's so many extra things that are happening, right? So, when you're encouraging people to be on our board and encouraging them to participate in the COA, you're creating leadership in the community that is really hard for them to access otherwise, right? Like, it's super hard for someone to run for a commissioner or run for a school board seat. But to be with us, where we're teaching them all the things, it's very similar to what's happening at CNE Cooperative and the local union. We're helping people realize their leadership opportunity, which is so important in a small community where we need more leaders doing the hard work.
Awesome.
And that local voice is really critical to us. I mean, homeowners especially, they can tell us what's going on in a community. They can tell us, hey, this is the general sentiment, or I've talked to these people, and these are the barriers that are facing, and we can respond. So, local is everything, and that's why we focused on these two counties and really making sure we have representation. So, I don't know if you know Rachel Woldworth, who was Leadville Herald editor for a while there. She's one of our current board members. She recently moved to Alamosa, so we would like to recruit new board members for one of those spots. Hopefully, with a new homeowner, once we get the rail yard done, so. Go to the next slide.
Yeah. Projected finish date for that?
We're still shooting for December. The insides are pretty much done, got that worked out, we're waiting on some inspections. The concrete work has been to hold up, the two brothers, we lost a little, half their workforce, rather suddenly. And so, they are limited to what they can do, so we just brought in a new contractor to get a retaining wall done, and then we can move forward. Things are looking good there, it's just the exterior is waiting for those steel structures for the, for the roofs, for those parts, and then they can move on with siding and roofing. So, those will be the last pieces, unfortunately. So, this is a parcel donated by, from, by the Lura, ultimately through the city, I guess. And we got parcel together, the capital stack, so DOH funding, Department of Housing, Division of Housing, I'm sorry, grants from Climax, some from other entities, the Downpaying Assistance Program that we brought to the table. And like I said, we're pursuing Federal Home Loan Bank funding, another grant that Kristi wrote. We'll find out in December if we get that funding, which will allow us to buy prices down from a hundred percent AMI to eighty percent AMI. So, even deeper affordability, hopefully reaching more folks in the community who may not be able to afford the current prices, so. It's been an expensive and challenging project, basically, because the modules were built in a factory that went under during the construction process. So, we, this is down in Pueblo, it's called Indy 12. So, because we had two projects in the works with them, and we paid deposits, we stepped in, partnered with the workers in the factory to get our modules built, delivered, and completed. And those guys are still coming up finishing the interiors. So, now, we actually have a partnership with this new factory that's starting up in Walsenburg. And they're going to be producing, one of the first things is a park modular to replace manufactured homes with a modular home on a traditional foundation that will be conventionally financed and treated as true homeownership and equity building. So, a great, cool opportunity for future replacement of aging manufactured homes in the parks.
This is like upgrading trailer parks?
Yep.
It's come up a couple of times before, and it's really interesting subject to me, because I'm all, I'm all aboard the tiny home train. And it seems like that's a really good fit for that kind of affordable, smaller housing units is replacing these aging, you know, mobile homes that are not in the best shape. You know, a lot of them have really outlived their lifespan, and people are still holding it down and keeping them going. And the infrastructure's there, you know, it's sort of like, man, it's a great fit for what you're talking about. So, that's really cool to hear about.
Yeah, and if you want to work on the code, we can figure out a way that you could do it on a thickened slab, like a thick and insulated slab, so you don't have to refrost wall and flings and all that.
Right.
Isn't that already allowed?
It is, yeah, it is in a way, but it would probably, it is allowed, but it's kind of difficult, actually. It's not the easiest way to go.
And that'd be a great conversation to have, especially with your builder brand, because, you know, the product that comes out of the factory is going to be designed for likely ICF foundations or for something like that, not necessarily a slab, but a very small crawl space. But either way, it'll fit in a park, so sixteen by forty-eight feet for a two-bedroom unit. It should be just a matter of pulling out that old trailer and creating in one module, no connections, except for, you know, underneath, that's a pretty quick addition. And then, if we can, still working on the cost of that, and then ultimately, what grants can apply. But, you know, we're shooting for somewhere in the hundred thousand dollar range with traditional financing, which, you know, thirty-year, lower interest rates, et cetera, than your typical chattel loan, should start making it affordable for folks, so.
How do you manage the, the land ownership, though?
So...
Like, the rental of the land?
We own two mobile home parks in Chafee County.
Oh, that's cool.
And so, that works perfect, yep.
That doesn't work up here.
We've got to go with for them, you know, figure out which ones the owners are like, ready.
Well, it's constantly under, it's constantly being worked on, just saying, it doesn't...
It depends on the owner and what they're willing to do in terms of ground leases.
Right.
And assigning ground leases or subleasing, et cetera. So, it can be done. But we're going to have this model on the ground in Johnson Village, right on two eighty-five, and hopefully, April of two eighty-five is our goal. And then, there'll be a showroom for people to come and touch, feel, walk through, and then hopefully, start building some appetite. And we have the opportunity to put ten or twelve of those units in that park in Johnson Village, so.
Reid's very humble. I'm not quite sure if you understand, like, how dynamic the organization, I wasn't on board then when all this happened, how dynamic they had to be to make all of those things happen. And foundations across the state are watching what CHT does to see if it is a model to save all these manufactured home parks that have been such a problem for so long. Like, to step in when a factory is going under, still get your units produced, and then, like, help those workers transition into creating their own one. In the meantime, he's still building houses.
Yeah.
And he acquires two manufactured home parks, like, with a shoestring staff, like, it's amazing hearing that.
We just had a staff meeting earlier today with Keisha and Kristi there. Three other folks are all pretty awesome. So, I'm excited about our team and our ability to take on the scaling that we're experiencing. We would love to see more opportunity here in Lake County, but we've got to get the rail yard done first, so.
Yeah.
So, as I described, a hundred percent AMI, sorry, just want to make sure I didn't miss anything there. And yeah, sort of got the occupancy by December. On the manufactured home, there's one thing about these aging homes is the cost to own. So, we approach building as low cost to purchase, durability over time, and then low cost to own. And the heat costs of so many homes in Leadville. I was courting my wife when she was living here, and you know, a two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred-dollar winter heating bill was pretty normal, and she had a pretty nice place compared to some of the older homes. So, making sure that we're using, you know, the heat pumps and whatever other technology we can bring in, making sure it's a really tight package so that it's going to not leak. And that low cost to own allows people to afford a higher mortgage, makes affordability more accessible, so.
Can I ask you a few questions? Can you talk about, with this development, have some of the deed restrictions, which have historically been a little challenging for people who, you know, it's their first home, but then they go to move on, but then they've got a deed-restricted property, and I've seen that kind of be an issue for people who, you know, get into their first home, but then they try to leave it. And some of the other developments, and so, and we're with even the Housing in Ten Two, we're having double deed restrictions, where it's, you know, that's a little different. But it would make it really challenging to get someone into those homes, and then they're ready to leave and move up from that home, because they have kids or whatever. What are the deed restrictions on this look like, or are there any at all? Because I know a lot of the housing developments, the deed restrictions come from with some of the other areas that you've developed. So, could you tell us if there are deed restrictions here, and what do those look like? And what does that mean in terms of like someone who's, you know, purchased this property, and now they're going to go on to maybe live somewhere else? And what it looks like for them to be able to, to not be tied to a property that maybe in eighty years or sixty years, whatever, you know, that they're just ready to do something different?
Sure. So, the Lura has a deed restriction that goes with it that says a hundred percent AMI. The funding that we have also says a hundred percent AMI, so we've got everything well-aligned. Those are the only deed restrictions, or with the state as a covenant, that's put on there for twenty years. And then, that goes away. We, you know, our approach is in perpetuity. So, that ninety-nine-year ground lease holds that it's going to be affordable to whatever household moved in there, if it's eighty or a hundred, the next household have to qualify at that, at that amount as well.
What does that do for people in terms of like equity they've built into their house? If they're capped at being able to have, you know, you normally build equity in your house.
Twenty-five percent, you were talking about earlier.
Yeah, so the twenty-five percent of the market-based appreciation, so it's appraisal to appraisal, is the equity that wa, is the appreciation they walk with. The equity that they've built from their principal payments on their mortgage, of course, they'll see that as well. To give you an example, we had a young man who's a carpenter, working for a local builder, living in his RV. We got him in a home for a hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. He held it for five years, and he walked away with a forty-eight thousand dollars. The market was doing well, so it's a reflection of that. But he got to see enough to walk out to have enough money to put it as a down payment on a marquetry home. So, we call these stepping stone homes. And we hope that people start with our home as a renter, and then move on to the open market and start building that multi-generational wealth through homeownership, so. We've had two resales to date, and both of those sellers, one of them I mentioned, walked away doing well. We've got three resales underway currently with folks who partnered up and need a bigger house, or actually, both cases, that's what happened. And then, yeah, so, so, resales just are another opportunity for someone local from our waiting list to then step into one of those homes. We help people market them, et cetera, and we facilitate the process to make sure it goes smoothly. And they, a new ground lease is written with the new owner, so that ninety-nine-year clock starts again.
Oh, okay.
So, you can see how it just recycles over and over. Ninety-nine years is the longest time you can have for a contract.
Yeah.
That's why that's there.
There's a potential for the, for the house to really appreciate over twenty years, maybe a million dollars, depending on the location. How do you, how do you account for that? Like, if you're selling for three hundred, in ten years, it's, the market rate's one point three, the guy walks away with two fifty, and so, do you understand my question?
I do, yeah.
I understand that same question, actually.
I think that's kind of what it was.
The projector, like, twenty-five percent equity, given enough increase in a long enough amount of time, is there a point where that becomes unsustainable, where the twenty-five percent isn't enough to backfill what the person has in the home, sort of makes it less, less ideal, yeah?
Because typically, it's a three percent cap on appreciation per year, is that right?
That's your standard. Deed restrictions, some of them go as low as two. And a quick note on that, if you own a home and you know it's only going to appreciate three percent, no matter what you do to it, do you maintain it? Do you really worry about, you know, having something that's worth selling later? Whereas, if you have a stake in the appreciation, you act differently, you act like a real homeowner. So, five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar home in however many years should be affordable to that same demographic of eighty percent or a hundred percent area median income. AMIs have been going up lately, somewhere between eight and eleven percent. I think Lake County hit the cap, actually, last year, and they could not go any higher, though as a reflection of who's moving in, incomes are going up, so. So, it should work out. And when a resale happens, we have the opportunity to intervene. We can add more money to the sale to try and bring that price down, if that's what needs to happen. But historically, AMIs have matched that twenty-five percent or kept below it, so it's only become more affordable over time.
Interesting. I like that concept.
Yeah.
I like it better than the two percent. It's more appealing to me if I was interested in buying one of these.
Yeah.
I mean, we're trying to appeal, we're trying to create real homeowners.
Yeah.
So, let's make it as real as possible, but we know they can't buy here. And so, the only way to get them in is this shared appreciation. It's when the gap between a market rate home and our prices, when there's a big enough gap there, that people realize this is their only option.
Right.
And they're enthusiastic about it, because they see that no other way to make it work in the long run.
Reid, can you, just for my identification, explain the difference between you all and the Chafee Regional Housing Authority?
Good question. So, typically, in the community, you've got... Good question. So typically in the community, you've got a regional housing authority that is quasi-governmental. They can access credit funds, they can do financing, they can do bonding, they can even do eminent domain. There's lots of tools available to them to create affordable housing. And typically, their focus is on rentals. So Lytech projects, Section Eight vouchers, or I forget the new name for a Section Eight, but the housing voucher program, they manage that. On the homeownership side, housing authorities may or may not get in that realm because it's a whole different level of risk and management that they don't feel comfortable with as a quasi-governmental entity. So the nonprofit comes in as a partner. We can get grants that they can't access. We can take risks that they can't take. We can do things that they can't do in partnership to create the pipeline from, you know, housing voucher to rental to homeownership. And as a paired entities, I think working together really closely is what is most effective. And both the housing needs assessments in Chaffee County identified that explicitly. Here's two mechanisms you need in place to address housing, and this is in two thousand seventeen and two thousand sixteen. We got both of those in place here, and I was a big advocate of the regional housing authority coming into fruition here, so that we've got a local partner to work with.
Did you work with Becky back when she was part of the Regional Housing Authority in Chaffee?
Uh, yes, I did, actually.
I know you were set really different programming because she was in the unhoused needs program.
Exactly. So, you know, they're addressing parts of the continuum that we don't address, so unhoused. People who are, you know, just need transitional housing and then the rental market for workforce.
Right.
And, you know, similar in Chaffee County, we have an understanding that you guys work on that and then we'll pick the ball up from there. And there's a little bit of an overlap on the homeownership side because they do get some in their inventory. But by working closely together, we can tackle a lot of things, including policy, including marketing, including getting renters in and then working with them on their financial stability and hopefully educating them to the point where they can get to ownership.
Does Chaffee County have somebody similar to what we have in Jackie in the county?
You know, it's an interesting thing that happened here in Lake County, and I'm still trying to wrap my head around it.
Same.
Your predecessors decided to, in addition to the Regional Housing Authority, create this other entity. For whatever reasons, that's what happened. And so, no, that doesn't exist in other places. There's either a county housing authority or a multi-jurisdictional housing authority, which is more independent. You guys have a housing department and a multi-jurisdictional regional housing authority. I would be a strong advocate for focusing all your energy on the regional housing authority because they can do things longer term. If you have a cycle of county commissioners and direction changes, housing is so long-term, you can't afford to keep changing direction. You need a steady path.
Yeah.
I think that regional housing authority is the conduit for that.
Yeah.
And for us, the partner to work with.
Okay, cool.
We've experienced it firsthand. I mean, we've inherited a lot of projects that really well-intentioned, and we've been really lucky with how a lot of them have worked out and the funding has worked out. Sometimes there's some question marks there, which is really scary when you're talking about some of these big projects. And I could see as these boards have turnover way faster than the projects themselves get completed, you could see things completely fly off the rails without a lot of. And we've been inclined, we couldn't derail that project pretty easily.
Okay, that's really important. Both Matt and I sit on the Regional Housing Authority. And it's just, we just did a strategic plan. We have, we finally got an executive director. Like even though it's been in existence for like three years, we're also still kind of in an infancy. So trying to understand who is doing what and where our energy should go is, I appreciate perspective.
Absolutely. And I've participated in housing authority meetings, loving having Becky on board.
Yeah.
And working out with, you know, the ten-two project and how that's going to shake out. I mean, let's get people housed. That's the goal here.
Totally.
They just have a different mechanism and a different program, but long-term, I think your housing authority should be the conduit and sort of a focal point for all things housing, so that there is that coordination and we can work closely with them.
This land, the land banking is just, I've been hearing it so much more recently, and I really appreciate that approach, so kind of.
Well, you know, land banking is getting titles to land and holding it.
Yeah, 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 sorry. Using the actual land.
Yeah.
The, the ground leasing is awesome, but also land banking is a part of that for future generations.
And we are, I submit an application every year to OEDIT for some sort of land banking opportunity. Because I just want to keep throwing our hat in the ring and one of these days they'll say yes.
Yeah.
But yeah, property's not getting any cheaper.
Yeah.
If there's key properties that can be obtained and held, let's do that. And there might be an opportunity for us to work with the county on that, you know, should something come up, let's act quickly and make sure that opportunity isn't lost. Because if we'd done that in the great recession, again.
Oh, my gosh, I can't imagine.
We would have lots of things to work with.
No kidding.
Yeah.
Do you guys work with other entities like school districts or anything like that to look for identified land parcels that might suit future needs?
I have, and I chat with Kate and, you know, with previous superintendents. You know, I need, with Climax, any big entity in town that has a need and might have properties, we'd love to be at the table. The Housing Coalition, you know, with all the PAT and all the other subgroups there. I mean, that was a big conversation for a while there with the Climax parcel and the school district parcel. So you guys got something going there, which is great. So yeah, and to explain some of our challenges, we build projects, we realize some sort of developer fee ideally, a very modest one. But that's how we fund the organization. Our two big projects that are completing right now, one just completed and slid out and sold and occupied, but the rail yard being the other one that came out of COVID have been very expensive and have drained our resources pretty severely. We're not going to realize developer fee from those projects, but we're mission-oriented to look at them done. General operations is really challenging for us to raise funds for.
Yeah.
You know, our general operating budget is under a half million all told. But the Community Housing Development Organization, or CHDO, acronym being CHODO, CHODO Funding.
Horrendous.
There you go. Is, they provide us with fifty thousand dollars a year as long as we get a local match. And so historically, we've been able to realize a small match from all the entities to make this work.
Thanks, Matt.
And this year is challenging for municipalities. Leadville and Unavista and Salida are all not sure where they're going to get funds from. Chaffee County, we've asked for thirty thousand dollars from them this year, and we're hoping that that would be the case. They've been slowly ramping up over the years. And so getting some sort of contribution from the county to realize the fifty thousand dollar match is important to us. The way the state sees it is if the local entities don't ask to get in the game, then why should the state? And so just a modest support of some sort annually at least helps us pay staff, keep projects going. And when we don't have developer fees as income, then we have to figure out ways to cover it otherwise.
It's also a leverage, so like your investment, wherever it's leveraged significantly, yeah, through like the buy-down the DOH does on the rail yard units and in addition to the CHODO funding that they give to us. So we will be submitting your form that's due on Friday.
Yeah.
And will be coming to your meeting in November. But kind of wanted to give you a heads up on that and talk about like, we are super collaborative. We work with, with everybody and we understand that the need is super hard and we don't have an option to step back in this moment. Because it's a requirement of the state.
Such a, it just brings up so many questions for me about like our larger, what we as a county spend on housing and in what initiatives? And what is working and what, you know, just, I'm just curious to look at the whole of what we're spending on our ROI.
Becky and I spoke on Monday and talked about like, it'd be really great to get all the housing works together.
Yeah.
And talk about how to be more collaborative, more strategic and all that stuff. And I think that's going to be a conversation at the Housing Coalition meeting on Monday.
A lot of overlap. It would be really cool if everyone could.
So it's, it's coming, it's just not there yet.
Yeah.
I'm so glad you're doing that. Yeah, thank you.
I mean, a lot of pieces are in place, you know, with Regional Housing Authority there, with the Housing Coalition, with all the work that's been done. I feel like it's been this long, slow educational process of everybody understanding how these moving parts all fit together. So we're now at a point where with these entities established, you know, you've got Becky in place, the ten-two project's moving forward. I think we can do some good things, so.
And what about, I mean, the city has a dedicated tax specifically for housing. And so much of the conversation around funding the Regional Housing Authority is meant to come out of the two-way funds that Christie very humbly actualized in this community as well. So when it comes to acquiring funds from either the city or the county, in my mind, the city seems like the more viable well to go to, is that you all are going to them too, right?
Correct.
Okay, good. Because I know last night they literally just went over, like them even understanding how much money has been collected by the accommodations tax and how much is still in that fund right now is new. And they have money in that fund that they want to get into people's hands, whereas we don't have that well. So just want to double check, you guys are asking them for this money, right?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I mean, I hope it's a collaborative discussion of, you know, who can afford to contribute what in a given year because sources dry up and things change.
Of course, of course.
So finding ways to just help us perpetuate our operations so we can look for the next project and look for the next project. I mean, we're planning three to five years ahead. That's how long it takes, so.
Yeah, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to get at is that literally they, the city council just had this conversation last night because the county is contributing money for Becky's benefits. And they were like, well, how can we just take over all of that? Because the county currently needs some stress relief from their funds. So how can the city, like that collaborative conversation is already happening. And I'm not, I'm not proposing we turn off the county forever. I'm just saying that maybe this year that might be the place where you're going to find more room, room for, for help.
Sure.
This is not the conversation we're meant to have right now. I get it. But I'm just saying that that conversation was happening last night at the city. Was there Sunday?
Yeah, I was there. Oh, I didn't know you were there. I'm sorry. I was online. I didn't see who was in the room. Okay. Yeah, so I think maybe we, we definitely like have let folks know that this is like a requirement of the state.
Yeah.
But maybe we're like a little behind the ball on figuring out how that could work this year, but we're in communication.
Awesome.
We're having this communication with the city, we're having a communication with Becky, and we're having this communication, conversation with you all.
I love it. Thank you so much.
And we're open to collaboration with the understanding that we're tied up, yeah.
And current crises aside, let's plant the seed, especially with the three of you in your tenure, of what are the big steps we can plan out into the future? What are the things that we can bring to the table to help make that happen? Our reputation with Division Housing and the state is good, with foundations is good. You know, we've got something to bring to the table. If there's a collaborative opportunity, that's going to mean more housing, period, whatever type. We want to be part of that conversation.
That's awesome.
And I'm obviously here in town. You guys can call me, text me anytime, shoot me an email. ReidsonBB.
I'm not here frequently, so.
Yeah, yeah. But I'm not, I'm welcome to like weigh in on stuff that's happening at the legislature with my experience at the Housing Coalition. Sometimes I understand what the state is trying to do and sometimes I don't, but I just want to open that invitation. Please don't hesitate if you're ever like, I don't, I got lost, please use me as a resource.
By the way, Matt has been or was a longtime advisory board member for the Housing Trust. So he's seen our arc and knows us pretty well from the inside.
You've done a lot of good work over the years. We definitely watched you grow.
Yeah.
A lot of perseverance.
Been hanging in there and had some support.
That's awesome. Super grateful for you both. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Happy to come in anytime on the phone call away. Happy to come to a meeting and talk about strategy or opportunities. And if you need any explaining, happy to sit down with you and get into the weeds of what we do. The weeds are deep, so I don't want to go too far down the rabbit hole.
Reid, how long are you up here today?
Till mid-afternoon.
Are you available at two?
I want to say yes, but I do want to check.
Just because I have a pertinent, timely question I would love to chat with.
I am.
And you're not, I can chat with Christie.
No, I'm good too.
Okay.
If you guys get any updates or any new exciting information about these manufactured home replacement units, I'd love to be included on any of those. That's super interesting to me to learn about how, because we've obviously got a large amount of those and I don't know how the land underneath them works, but you know, definitely feel free to tag me on any of those if you guys ever want to.
Okay.
I can send you floor plans and some architectural drawings of what we have in the works.
Okay.
Pricing is next and then the manufacturing is gearing up. But regardless of us being involved in the land ownership or whatever, those boxes will be available.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. I'll start digging into maybe where it's been actually applied elsewhere in the nation, which has to be examples out there where this is already going down.
Maybe it'd be where it's, yeah, I'd love to meet with Soprano to talk about like where each community sets and what opportunity there is for duplicating what happened at C and E.
We've got, we've been on our radar, is getting together again soon about another subject that's a little different, but related as well, so. We'll be sitting down with him. So yeah, we'll just kind of talk about both of those at the same time, maybe.
Christie, how much experience do you have with Lytech?
I mean, I understand the, the ten-thousand level of it.
Yes.
I mean, yeah, I can teach you, I have some really great intro videos that I'm happy to send to you guys.
That would be awesome. Thank you.
Little mother beast.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But like so important, right?
Yes.
And there's been like a lot of promises of Lytech projects in the past and man, you need to do them right, essentially. And Dola, we reached out to offer to kind of do a work session for us on that.
That's great.
I just wanted to mention one other like collaborative thing that I think is going to happen pretty soon. At the Housing Coalition meeting on Monday, we're going to talk about how CHT and the Regional Housing Authority and the Housing Coalition can work to, work together to market all the units that are coming online.
Yeah, awesome.
And also hopefully turn the tide a little bit on public opinion around fall builds.
Awesome.
Just so you know that there are a couple of collaborative efforts that we're part of.
Cool, thank you.
In your script.
Great. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, y'all.
It's a year. It's gonna be harder than building a house.
You know, that's what they said when I did two A.
Okay.
Get it, girl.
See you guys. Thank you.
Okay.
Bye, guys.
Congrats, John. Thanks for coming in. Thank y'all.
So when you're presenting all of the things that you don't want to grab are just in this little.
Okay. All right, moving on. Agenda item number two, overview and discussion regarding the IGA with Summit Stage led by Candace Bryant, County Manager, and Stuart Clark, Operations. Hey, Stuart.
Andy.
See ya.
Elsa, how you doing?
Hello, lovely to have you.
I'm one of your constituents, by the way.
Really? I, we're, you're one of all of our constituents.
Yeah, we're not at-large county.
That's correct. So we just found out recently that we owe roughly two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars for Summit Stage. I want to talk a little bit how we got there and maybe a couple of options that may help us to reduce that next year, but not this year. We are working on a grant. It's called the SB two-thirty and that, that, that's a fund that oil and gas in Colorado pays into to reduce emissions. And our only angle there is that we're taking some cars off the road from going over the mountain.
Right.
And we're not, even if we do get a chunk, I don't think it'll be more than forty thousand dollars. And they've given us some extensions to help us, because it ended in September, but we're working kind of in the grace period. And they've given us some extensions to help us, cuz it ended in September, but we're working kind of in the grace period. That's behind the scenes, I'm not related to, to today's discussion. The oldest IGA we could find was, it was for a twenty eleven transit, but the IGA was signed in twenty twelve. And our obligation was a hundred and fifty-six thousand, um, back in twenty twelve. And we'll go over a cost breakdown spreadsheet to, to show you a little more. And the only other IGA that we have, um, is from twenty, let's see.
He makes a little figure down there, that plus. Yeah. There we go.
This'll help everyone, yeah, yeah. I guess I'm gonna help me, so, uh.
I couldn't see it either.
Anyway, I've got a couple of the IGAs in, in the documents that we have, and we can look at those if you like. But our obligation is two hundred and fifty-eight thousand this year. And then our topic for presentation is how can we reduce that for twenty twenty-six? The hourly rate that they're charging us is about eighty-seven dollars currently. And I've got an attachment, where did you save those, where did?
Sorry, can't left-hand drive. Could try. Um, so, I'll go back. Look at that back arrow, then all here. Essentially, we'd like to revisit this IGA because our cost will be going up and we'd, we'd like to have the discussion of what our options are in the future for still being able to provide a service, but also be able to afford that service. It's the green one with the, the little green X, Excel document?
Do you have a look through that Excel spreadsheet? The cost?
Oh, actually, I was looking for a different one, that's okay. We, we can go, we can go here. Nope, not that one.
It is not showing, I can just add it.
Yeah, can you add it cuz he created a separate spreadsheet that, that shows like what are, like a three different options for us for twenty twenty-six? Give her just a second, she's gonna drop it in there.
This is the one that you had me add this morning, if that's what you're looking for.
Oh, that's the bus route.
Oh, okay.
Give us one second. Cuz I felt that that was really helpful to see. Sandra, do you mind opening the door again?
Yeah.
Want insurance on the payments?
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you. We were looking at it this morning, so hopefully we aren't the X-factor that deleted.
That's okay.
We could be.
Everything I sent to you was in a PDF.
If you refresh it, it should be there now. But they haven't, they should just pop in.
Okay, we'll use that cost breakdown.
No, guys, of course not.
Is that the one, right?
Yeah, that'll work.
Yeah.
PDF?
Okay, let's go to this cost breakdown, this'll help us to understand what's happening.
That's the one you wanted, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'll show you, sure.
All right, uh, let's just take a look at that first line, twenty twelve. Based on three hundred and sixty-five days a year, Summit Stage operated for us six hours a day. At a rate of seventy-one dollars an hour. Our total obligation was a hundred and fifty-six thousand, at that time, there was no federal grant money, and we paid a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Dropping down to twenty sixteen, the hours per day of the operation was nine hours per day from six, and that's when I think we turned into two buses in the morning and two buses in the afternoon. At a rate of seventy-five sixty-three an hour, that's an increase of six percent from twenty twelve, which is very reasonable. The total obligation was two hundred and forty-eight thousand, no grant money, so we paid them two hundred and forty-eight thousand in twenty sixteen. Then in twenty twenty-three, we have information from there, we were still at nine hours a day. Eighty-one forty-four is what they charge us per hour. That's an increase of about seven percent. But we had grant money of a hundred and thirty-two thousand, that's the seventy-three eleven, uh, federal grant, which helped bring our rate from two sixty-seven to one thirty-five. Do you have a question, Andy, or?
No, no.
Okay. Do you wanna add that that grant is not our grant? That's a C dot grant and it goes directly to the Summit Stage, so, like, that wouldn't be accounted for on, on our books. Got it. This money goes to them directly, so we also have a cost savings of not having to manage that green.
I also wanna point out in twenty twelve and twenty sixteen, we charged a fare to a Lake County residence to go over the mountain. And they had a couple of different schedules. Uh, the highest fare was five dollars a day each way, which is ten dollars a day. Then there was some discounts for disabled people, veterans, that kind of thing. And then if you bought twenty days in a row, it was about half of the five dollars, about two dollars and fifty cents. Back then, if we had fifteen passengers a day, it'd be like twenty, twenty-five thousand a year, which isn't a whole lot of money. But it is something if you wanna, and maybe entertain that going forward. I came from the transit industry and during COVID, most of the operators ended the fares. And so that's kind of a history of charging a fare. Just, just so you understand how that piece works. So potentially, we could maybe uh, gain twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars in fares, if it's something that the board's interested in.
Demographics-wise, do you know how many riders are locals employees versus how many tourists are using the service?
Uh, I don't, that's a really good question, Andy, I, I don't have, I only have the total.
Yeah.
But I don't have how it breaks down, but I think it's mostly tourists.
It'd be interesting if we could, if that data was available to see who was paying the five dollars versus who was buying the twenty dollar, or the twenty-day uses, because that would pretty much tell you right away.
Yeah.
Who was, yeah, so, cuz.
Maybe twenty to thirty thousand dollars is not a lot relative to what we're doing. I think really where I would like to focus are those last three options, so you see twenty twenty-six, there's three different options. Um, so maybe I'll have Stuart walk you through those, cuz to me, charging people, which, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you said it was thirty people usually use the, the transit, so that's probably, that's probably local people community to work, and we do wanna support that. Thirty thousand dollars is not that big of an offset, but I think maybe some of the other options for negotiating the IGA, which you can see, you know, that top, that top one is pretty expensive for us. I, I really love some of the ideas Stuart has about how we could still provide transit options, knowing that, you know, this is just to open up what would we like to discuss with Summit Stage, cuz they could come back and not like any of these options, so.
Good. So the way that I get, we're, the communication piece between us and Summit County isn't as efficient as I'd like. Chris Lubbers is their, um, Transit, uh, Manager. It usually takes him a couple of weeks to get back to us, so I've been preparing for this meeting, I didn't, I didn't reach out to him. But what I did do is go to their Transit Board meetings and I looked at the minutes. And currently, it's about sixteen, well, it is sixteen people average per bus. Two buses, that's thirty-two people a day that we take over the mountain and bring back. Just, just so you know.
Sixteen per bus, one way?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's two buses.
Yeah, so it's thirty, thirty-two people.
Thirty over, thirty back.
Six, it averages sixteen per bus, brick, going and coming.
Got it.
So, just so you understand how that piece works, the fare works.
So would that be six, sorry, I'm just clarifying so I make sure I understand, would that be sixteen people probably leaving and then those sixteen coming back? Or do we think that's sixteen people going there while other people are?
That's a really good question, so, uh.
Sorry.
So the, the act, in the meet, in the board meeting minutes, it just says an average of sixteen.
Gotcha.
And we were higher.
That's why I was.
And maybe in the winter, it's a, it's a, it's a bit higher, maybe it's eighteen, I can go back and look at the meetings. I was just reviewing one of them, um, one of the meeting minutes this morning. So that just gives you a little bit of a foundation of how passenger ridership, um, I would, we would all like to see it go up, um, and we can talk about that at a future date. Okay.
So what you're changing is the amount of hours per day?
I, I would like to, yes.
The twelve point five, what is that accounting for, is that counting for all four buses? Like, you think it was just two buses when it was six hours a day and now we're at four buses?
Yeah, so I, I think, yeah, two buses in the morning, two buses at night.
Yeah.
And you know, it's an hour each way to Frisco, right? So that's eight hours. So the nine hours means that they've got a little bit of the bus driver pre-trip and pro, pro-trip inspection stuff. And maybe only one stop with nine hours. Now we've got a number of stops, so we're at twelve point five hours per day. We can look at another attachment here.
With all of the stops.
Yeah, this is our current stops, um, that we have. In the morning, we're at Harrison, City Hall, we've got one, two, three, four, five stops. And if you figure ten to fifteen minutes, the drive time and loading, uh, time, you can see we've got almost an hour wrapped up in stops in town. And we've got something similar at night, we've got River Road, Safeway, Eagles Nest, Family Dollar, City Hall, and Harrison. So we've got quite a bit of time wrapped up in stops.
Wait, pause, I don't see the time, I see five minutes of time between Harrison and Eagles Nest.
Yeah, to get to them, yeah, where's your times at, right here?
Harrison, look at the AM, five twenty.
Yeah.
And then Eagles Nest is five twenty-five.
Okay.
So where is the hours worth of time wrapped up in our stops?
Because we've got two minutes, one minute, eight, or two minutes, well, because it's not as much?
I just see, I see an, I see five minutes worth of stops. But you just said there's an hours worth of time wrapped up in our stops.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't study these times as well as you're looking at them right now. But I did ride our local, local transit bus about a month, a month ago.
Yeah.
I went and rode it just to see how we're operating.
Yeah.
And it took a little longer than this, but, um.
Right, but it's, it makes sense for, I mean, just going down Harrison is all you're doing, if nobody's there, you don't stop. I just don't see where there's time to save, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Stuart, that's what I'm offering, is I don't see the time that you are saying.
Understood, and I don't know how accurate this is either, because, oh, I see, they're saying it takes zero time.
Yeah.
And then two minutes to Family Dollar, yeah.
That's all accurate.
I mean, I don't know how long it takes to load them.
Maybe it's averages, and it's your couple minutes to load your money, yeah.
Depending on traffic and how many people are in town, cuz I know sometimes it takes me way longer than two minutes, you know, from Safeway into town when there's traffic, but, or how many people are loading and unloading on that bus.
But we're not talking about more than five minutes, so I, if we're talking about cost savings, I'm not seeing the cost savings. I think he's saying going from two stop, or from two times a day to maybe one, but then the third option, which, do you mind to go back to that other?
Sure.
Just one in the morning is like.
I see six, and then going over, and it's the same going back.
There's two.
So there's.
Two buses? There's one at five twenty and one at six twenty.
Yeah, we have two in the morning, then two in the afternoon, bringing people back from over the mountain.
How am I not understanding this, and it's gotta be very simple, and I'm missing something really easy, it, I saw six departure times.
Those are stops, like a bus is stopping at those places, there's not like.
Can we go back one, so, just so I can, you can help me understand, I'm not.
Yeah, sure, let's do that.
Sorry. I'll just, so.
We've got one bus at the top.
It, there's a bus at Harrison and Third at five twenty and six twenty. And then there's a bus at Harrison and Third at one o'clock, at two o'clock, at seven o'clock, and at nine thirty.
This is going over, going over, coming back, coming back.
Those are all northbound, the southbound's below it. So I, I'm seeing six buses going over every morning.
Every day.
Every day.
I mean, yeah, every day, and now six buses, is this currently what we're on right now?
It is currently what we're on, I'm not sure, I think our buses, cuz we only have two, two in the morning and two in the evening. So there must be other buses attached to this, um, this particular charge.
Like this isn't.
So this isn't reflective of what we currently are, are paying for right now.
Well, I think it is, but I think just the five twenty and six twenty are the buses that actually come to Led, well, I don't know what the one and two is, unless that has to do, I, I don't know what that is, to be honest with you.
Cuz it has stops listed and everything, I'm just trying to wrap my head around, what, what do we actually have? Yeah.
Cuz if there's twelve, if there's fifteen people on each of those.
Yeah.
I can't imagine a one o'clock northbound or a nine thirty northbound is sixteen people on it. Maybe there's, you know, thirty-five people on the six twenty, but.
And maybe they add, do they add afternoon stops, like in the winter times, like seasonal for lead papers? Cuz I know we did that in Pickham and like they changed every quarter, so that's more my question is like.
But this says summer twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, there's a summer and a winter schedule.
I don't know.
Cuz this was from Summit Stage.
Yeah, I just took this off the internet this morning, off of their, their website.
I'm trying to. So maybe we don't actually know which one of these we're paying for, is that potentially what's happening? Considering that the IGA's been hanging out there unpaid for for two years, I'd say. We don't know.
We don't know a, a whole lot right now, and we're trying to figure it out, and we are gonna figure it out.
I mean, we just gifted this.
Well, the last one is from two thousand sixteen, so it's, it's been out there for a long time, so this could have, you know what I mean? Our schedules could have changed drastically since.
No, this, this is what he just, oh, yeah, yeah.
And the transit app does say that I can get a bus at one o'clock from.
Really? Really? Maybe there is more than two, two.
Oh, there is.
Which could be, I mean, pretty significant as far as money goes.
I would assume that's accurate, what we.
Yeah.
I would say.
Definitely this, definitely the southbound end is accurate.
Do they not have the winter one posted, I'm sorry if I'm not knowing that, I'm talking my head.
It, it actually is, I just didn't copy that this morning.
Well, this says through November fifteenth, so.
Which, the reason I'm wanting to have this discussion is we really need to revisit the IGA. They, we've got paid, uh, where they're gonna stop our service on the fifteenth, that's why I made to do supplemental that I need to devote on the next regular meeting, um, and they gifted us twenty twenty-four, which is really.
Yeah, no, there, there's not like, you know, um, any bad ill will, bad blood, or anything wrong with the partnership, I wanna
Yeah.
make sure we're doing what we need to do to keep those vital workers moving from Lake County to Summit County, because it's important for both counties to keep this thing happening and.
I think one item that Stuart proposed, which would be a discussion with them, is that, you know, he said we're transit, we keep buses down here and have like a park and ride, and we wonder if there is an opportunity to do the same thing with the Summit Stage, if it's a thing we could ask them for, like, could we have the buses down here, and I'll let Stuart share a little bit more about what that could look like, because that would get our cost down quite a lot. It is a discussion point, they could say no, um, but you can't say no if you didn't even ask, and so that's one of the things I'd love for us to consider is what could that look like, and could we utilize our shuttle system to help with that?
Mm-hmm.
Getting to buses if they were already here.
Yeah, it's almost like we've got to, to, we'll get to service going on right now with Summit Stage running all over and then our own transit system.
Yeah.
Doing the same thing.
I mean, to be fair, Summit Stage goes to Eagles Nest and Safeway, that is not, that is not directly on their route.
Family Dollar.
So the like, their only deviation from a normal route is Eagles Nest and Safeway.
Right.
And and I'm totally fine, like, if making that more efficient. I'm just saying it's a little.
There would be no way for them to even skip the Safeway drop off because that would be the transfer.
Right, yeah.
Eagles Nest would really be the only low hanging fruit there, but.
Right.
I think the change in pickup points is tiny, but the amount of money we're spending for that, if we could do it ourselves with our transit.
Yeah, I agree. I'm I'm on board. I'm just saying it's not gonna save us a hundred thousand dollars to take Eagles Nest off. So I'm I'm totally down for that conversation.
Okay. Um. Anyway, I I think some errors in my calculations, but currently in twenty twenty-five, they're charging us twelve point five hours a day, which I guess makes sense, six buses, two times.
Yeah.
And then some, you know, a bit of change, maybe point five for the, um, the multiple stops. Their rate difference is real reasonable, two percent. So anyway, we're, after the grant money of a hundred and forty, we owe them two hundred fifty-eight thousand. So in twenty twenty-six, assuming that they're just gonna charge two percent higher rate at eighty-eight dollars fifty-six cents. And say our grant goes up a similar amount, like four thousand dollars. Then our contribution in twenty-six would be two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Now, if we could reduce the hours in our IGA to just nine, um, we would reduce our contribution to a hundred and forty-six thousand. If we could reduce our hours per day to just seven, our contribution would only be eighty-two thousand.
Seven would be three buses going there, three buses coming back.
Well, I was all, if we stage two buses here, like Core does, they've got a bus barn, it's that wooden building.
Yeah.
Um, so they don't have to bring a bus, the deadhead a bus up.
That's Core's bus that that's stationed. That's not Summit Stage.
That's correct.
So that last option is what if we have the buses staged here?
What if we? Yeah, what if we kept two buses here? There'd be no deadheading for them.
Yeah.
Well, can you go back to their timetable?
Sure.
Yeah, if they factor that into their schedule.
Because they do, they take nighttime workers back up over here.
You have the last bus coming up here.
Oh, it's at ten thirty.
Right.
Yeah, that makes way more sense. To stage it here.
So it also, the driver, like Core does, they would be a Lake County.
Resident.
Resident who's an employee. And those are thirty dollar an hour jobs. Those are, those are good paying jobs. It also keeps that person from going over the mountain and driving for Summit Stage.
Yeah, totally.
So, but it makes sense, but let's look at this a little bit closer, um.
Sorry, where would the bus live though?
We're getting there.
Okay.
We have the same.
I have that here, let's see.
It's like Thomas the Tank Engine. It's hard.
Maybe we can drop one more document in.
Which one?
Um, it would be the one that would say potential.
You sent me two and they're both in here already, the memo and the cost breakdown.
There should be another one that says potential park and ride.
I did not get that document. I didn't get that either. The only one you gave me this morning was the cleaner one. I can quick up load them.
This should be yesterday afternoon.
Yeah, I just.
Anyway, the area that I thought might work is the area just south of Come and Go. I think it was the area we were considering building a.
Of Monroe Street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's a pretty big piece of property. I think we could put a park and ride right there and only have one stop. Maybe supplemental some of the riders that need to get to the, that that bus stop with our, with our current bus that we have running around.
But how much money would it be to fill the parking lot?
Well, I think just, um, just the road base, which we actually have in our mine.
Oh.
And then we would spread it, compact it, maybe compact it once a year. So we could probably do a park and ride really reasonably priced.
What's the location? I'm sorry.
Monroe Street.
Just south of Come and Go.
The old courthouse, the.
Justice Center location.
Courthouse, Justice Center.
Yeah.
Location. Hmm, that'd be good, too.
It's just a thought.
Harder, yeah.
There could be even a better piece of property that I'm unaware of.
I feel like, I feel like in the negotiations determining how much less we could spend, how many fewer buses we have. It would be important for me to know what the ridership is of all of them. Because I wouldn't wanna cut a bus that has more people on it. I'd wanna cut the buses that have the fewest, the least ridership.
If you wanna base that off data.
Yeah, I'd want it to be seasonally informed as well.
So they should have that information because I think all their buses have the electronic counters. So they, we should be able to get that information from them.
Great.
And if we had a couple of their buses here, I know they keep them in a heated bus barn down in Dillon now.
Right.
However, all those buses are equipped with the Wabasco diesel heater.
Oh, yeah.
Where they can heat them, not only the bus, but the engine before they start.
A certified Wabasco technician.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank God.
There you go.
Yeah.
Thank goodness.
I know exactly what he's talking about.
One thing, so this is like, one thing we had kind of talked about is I said, well, are there grants for bus barns?
Right.
And it sounds like the answer is yes. And so I I do think even though that would be like something immediately, but if we can come to a good plan that makes sense, that saves us money year over year, maybe could add another bus eventually for the same rate as what we're paying.
Yeah.
I I think those would be really good options to explore just because we're getting the same level of service, creating jobs for people here. And and also still having a good partnership that serves our people a little bit better.
Is there a way we could, the bus barn for the. The bus barn for the school district is in pretty rough shape. Maybe there's a way we could, maybe there's a way we could partner to strengthen our grant. Also, because we're talking about one or two buses and they've got like seven, so.
Be open to that.
You know, just like s- scale wise, it could be beneficial to partner with them.
Unless it like overly complicates the situation out of our hands.
Of course. Of course. Just looking for places to be efficient.
Yeah, we can, I have a, we have a meeting tomorrow with our representative that helps, helps us with our grants through the state. I'll ask that, that question also. Um, anyway, this is just an area I thought we could reduce the drive time. We could maybe have just a single park and ride. The other benefit of the park ride could be on these weekends where we have an influx of tourists. If we had a little more local presence with our transit bus, maybe our tourists could all park in one place too and we could get them around with the their transit buses.
Freezer ridership.
I, I, the last time I I rode our local transit bus, I was with them for an hour. We did our entire route. We did not, we did not pick up a single person. So I know there's times for our local transit that we could, maybe this earlier time to get people to the bus stop.
Yeah.
And later, maybe we could move things around a little. And our operational funds that we have, um, are fairly significant. So, um, I, I'm gonna ask tomorrow if we could do a little advertising, maybe put some signs up and maybe even some social media stuff for all of our county. To see if I'm, we might be able to increase our ridership locally.
Great.
Um, just as a plug for our local transit, uh, we do help those that are kind of unseen in our community. The battered women's shelter and different people that we're, we're helping to, to get around to the storage stuff.
Yeah.
Some elderly people. Um. Let's go back to the memo. Just wanna touch on something maybe that's important. So the hourly rate, I do have an attachment, it's just not sitting there. Um, the hourly rate to run a Gillig forty-foot low floor bus, and that's what Summit Stage runs, is ninety to two hundred plus an hour. They're only charging us in the eighties. So their rate is extremely fair.
Yeah.
The inflation rate, this is what they're charging us, two to seven percent in the last five years. That follows the national, uh, inflation rates. They're not gouging us here. Uh, the pre and pro-strip inspection, I don't think they're gouging us there and that'd be kind of nitpicking for us.
If they were gouging us anywhere, those numbers wouldn't be where they're at. They're, they're doing us a solid for sure.
We, we talked about the fares. It'd probably be actually anywhere from twenty to forty thousand. I don't know how the, I don't know how the board feels about actually charging fares to reduce that money.
I keep seeing the, the negative vibe on this over here and I want, oh, I'd be curious to hearing, uh, you guys elaborate on more of why you think fares are such a bad idea. Because I'm like, it's how it used to be, um, and it's, I don't wanna be in a position where we're wondering if we can even keep the thing afloat because we didn't look at all the options, you know? I'd rather have it be an imperfect situation than no situation at all.
And I just think that small, I mean, I know twenty to forty thousand dollars in the scope of our whole budget is not so significant, especially if it would decrease ridership even more for people who don't need to be driving over. But I do think we have some items that we could explore that would, I don't know, maybe get us the same, same outcome for not almost three hundred thousand dollars.
They're charging somebody to five bucks each way and they're not allowed five times a week. That's two hundred bucks a month.
Yeah.
Well, if they're an employee and they can buy the twenty ride packs, that brings down to two dollars and fifty cents each way. Maybe we can get the employee pack, see if how many of them get dropped at Copper Mountain. What, what's that?
I understand a lot of communities have like a local pass option too that you offer. That's like, the Macabre was also tracking data as far as like tourism riders and local riders. Um, I've lived in several communities where they could offer that as far as like providing your local status and the county
Yeah.
offers you like a free pass even. I'm not saying you do that option, but, um, just so we can maybe continue to kind of help some of those folks that are worried about the economic, um, price point.
Yeah, I mean, there'd probably be other metrics we could use to say, hey, like you get your fees maybe waived if you're in a, um, a certain category or whatever, I don't know, but, uh, I can't, I think just out of hand dismissing the charging fares because it seems like such a small number is where my mind's at right now with, in light of, you know, what we've inherited, what we're working with, what we're looking at. It's almost like we really need to kind of take a step back and look at every penny a lot harder. Because these things will eventually add up.
I concur. So that, I, I'll send you the IGAs that we current, what, the copies of the old ones. And the first two, they do have the appendix A, which has the cost.
I have the twenty-six one, yeah, the twenty sixteen one rather, yeah.
Okay. Okay. And the twenty eleven or twenty twelve, that one, uh, actually had higher costs.
Uh, uh, you know, I don't know how much that's gonna help. The other historical, I mean, you're operating under the current twenty sixteen which didn't have the rate, uh, you know, attached to it as part of the agreement and apparently that got dropped somewhere in COVID percent, you know?
I think what I would like to ask for is if you can get more data, like what we discussed today from Summit Stage, I know they're hard to get a hold of in terms of like numbers of riders, number of buses, and can we create a memo to share back to these guys? And then I don't know that we need to have a decision-making meeting other than I think once you have that information, we can explore, does that third option make sense?
So another thing they're supposed to be doing in the RFP.
Start that discussion.
Yeah, Stuart is sort of collecting data. They're, they're, they're supposed to be preparing and submitting a yearly FTA rule transit, national transit database report. I'm assuming that has ridership information in it. So if they haven't submitted that, that's probably what they're supposed to do.
Okay, I, that won't even be accessible on some sort of federal database too. Yeah, I, I think it is, but I will look into all of these things. I'll get more data. And then as far as building a bus barn or joining with the school, we probably should wait, uh, because we're, we're kind of doing an RFP to look at all of our properties right now. And we can include that in our, what we want to investigate and then rather than saying we'll build something here or just go with the school, we should probably see what they say too. What do you think?
I think if we're already having someone do that work, we include like, hey, we would wanna know what this could look like in that work because they're already doing it.
Okay, and, uh, and your thoughts on, uh, not ruling anything out, I, I concur with that. Um, you know, even the best economy car, they're gonna spend fifteen dollars a day going over the mountain.
Yeah, you know, it's still an affordable option for people who, you know, I, I, yeah, I've worked over the hill for decades and, you know, there were times where, you know, even in the, the most economical vehicles of us life, this is costing you so much to drive back and forth.
And it's also, but it's also a safety issue. Like if we wanna change people's behavior, getting them onto the bus is the way to do it. And it's, buses are just so much safer than the amount of.
Oh, yeah.
You know, especially the one going over to Summit. So I do feel like investing in behavior change as much as we can feels important to me. So I'm, I'm saying it's still, it's on the table for me, but I would wanna invest in getting people off the road.
Maybe could we approach Copper Mountain or Val Resorts and ask a person to help? Or figure out how many people are getting dropped, how many Copper Mountain employees? Because we have the numbers that would be.
We, we did open, uh, correspondence with them earlier this year. Um, just to see if there was a way to get more ridership. So, yeah, I've got that context still and we can, we can start that. Okay, maybe they have some data. I think we could do more with the Climax Mine too and the busing. They're, they offer a stipend to their employees, um, they'll ride two or three together. Um, but the busing would, uh, maybe better be more beneficial for them.
You'll have to coincide with their start time because I think it's six AM.
Which it does, that's why the first one goes then.
That's at five twenty. Anyway. Good job, Stuart. Keep, keep up the good work. Yes, I know it's a really complex subject and there's a lot of moving parts there and it's probably extra challenging if the back and forth communication isn't real timely.
It sounds like they've had, I'm gonna make that wrong here. It sounds like if they've been invoicing us for two full years, if they also have some things that they're working through and like getting some, it sounds like maybe they've got some new people too who are doing some of the same homework we are doing.
Getting permanent.
We know where it's like to have new people.
Yeah. Uh, and they're probably also discovering.
If you look at.
Oh, we didn't invoice two years, probably.
If you, if you go back and look at their meeting minutes, it's all different people about every time.
Yeah.
Oh, wow, okay.
The transit piece. But I can tell you this much about Summit. This is just a plug. Um, they, they use a contractor, the contractor sold out a couple of times to maintain their buses, help them spec out the buses and all that. And they have the same guy's name as Kevin Yoder. He's been there for twenty plus years. That guy really has a great handle on, um, mountain buses. No AC, four eighty-eight gears, no frills. Every one of their buses is the same.
Yeah.
Um, I know that doesn't mean a lot to you folks, but.
Oh, no, that's the gearing on the rear, rear axle, yeah.
Yeah, and it, so anyway, um, they're keeping the cost down as low as they can, mostly because of this particular guy.
Yeah.
Kevin Yoder, but, um, anyway, I, I think that they're really giving us a, a great deal at eighty-seven dollars in, in an hour.
Yeah.
It's kind of amazing.
Yeah.
Now, if you, if you def, if you, we dipped into electric buses, for instance, they're one point two million dollars versus five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a diesel. And the, um, the electric buses have a bunch of other problematic things in the mountains that we'd have to do.
Totally different infrastructural needs and storage needs and, um.
You can't.
And they just don't heat up.
Different batteries don't even work right below. Different batteries don't even work right below twenty one degrees for charging and discharging. Difference be, how about they weigh it a lot more with the giant rider?
They, matter of fact, the way that they do those electric buses, I'm sorry for taking it at once time.
That's okay.
You're, you're not, we need to know this information.
They usually have six, they have, usually have six different locations where they keep the batteries to distribute the weight. And most of them are up high, usually two in the back and four spread out throughout the bus. And they make the plates, um, with coolant and things that run through them to keep them warm and keep them cold. They're so close, if you get five years out of them, um, without some type of bleeding over.
Plates, you mean like the A G M plates?
Yes.
Yeah, glass mount.
So, um, anyway, they're, we're just not there yet, um, the, the battery bus side.
Yeah.
But the, what's really promising is the state of California where the bussing industry, transit is almost the NASA. For, for commuter vehicles and the hydrogen system that they're using California is the most promising. With the only waste being heat and water. Isn't that amazing?
Yeah.
So, um, any lost stuff?
When somebody figures the hydrogen thing out, you know, on a mass production level, that'll be the ticket, but. For a while, it was like Toyota was the latest player in that game as far as I could tell, but I've lost track.
So to get the hydrogen, we're stripping that away from natural gas? So what do we do with those other constituents of the natural gas piece? That's kind of, I think that's one of the big problems that we're facing.
Yeah. Or it's a byproduct of natural gas?
Yeah, they, they strip the hydrogen off the natural gas, cause we already have an infrastructure for that. Kind of interesting.
Yeah, it is interesting.
Yeah. Uh, I know everyone's busy and I could talk about vehicles forever, so.
Me too.
You and Andy could have. Anyway, um, we, we need to work with this, with our R F P for all of our properties and buildings. And do to include this, but we need to move kind of fast, right? Cause twenty six is quickly approaching.
We need that data as soon as possible.
Let me know what you want from me. I mean, I could certainly start looping the Summit County attorney in that may move the negotiation along a little quicker.
I'll work with you on this project as well, so we try and just help grow and tier and get some of that data that we're looking for. Um, as part of that, and then we can work on the next steps after we maybe see how long that's gonna take to get some of that. Together with Matt.
Yeah, that makes sense. And then we can follow up with you guys with the memo to let you know where we're at. And then I'll get information from you guys about whether we need to come back together. But I think really if we can get the data, then we can start to formulate a ask and just see where Summit's at in terms of like, are there options for them to keep a bus here and have a person?
Yeah.
Or if they're absolutely not up for it, we will know that, I think, before you know it.
I feel like a lot of the things we're talking about though, and not to extend this conversation, I apologize, but our, our long-term solutions. And, but we also have this immediate short-term need we gotta figure out right now.
We are gonna pay the invoice.
I'm paying, I have to pay it.
Yeah.
We're paying the invoice, we're gonna get the data, that's gonna queue up a potential I G A for negotiations. And hopefully we're gonna push it through by the end of the year.
Okay, end of the year. Cool. I'm just trying to wrap my head around timeframes on like. I can reach out to the Summit attorney and just let him, let him know that we got the twenty sixteen I G A. There's various discussions, you know, with the B O C C, you know, you know, get the cost down, but still provide the service, you know? Just get this on your, you know, radar that this is coming.
Awesome, thank you. And I triple checked the budget this morning. I did go ahead and budget for the full amount of this on the stage. You asked me and I was like, I can't remember anymore. The full, not the full amount, the subsidized amount, right? No, cause it was directly, the grant goes to them and they only bill us for the, the.
Our obligate.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Be immediate.
Our subsidized.
Yes, yes.
Is there any room for them to let us spread that out over any time, looking at what our immediate hurdles are and what the.
I mean, it'll be over the year, so it won't be, we won't pay it till next year.
Okay.
We, I mean, we have to pay the one year now, yeah.
Yeah, that's two fifty-ish.
Yeah, and I will pay that before the fifteenth, or we won't continue to have a bus after that.
Oh, that's what I was wondering, like, is there anything in there where they're like, look, if you just give us a hundred now and then it, middle of next year.
They give you just a year, um, like a bit.
Yeah, they, they were giving us a cutoff date and I thought it was November first.
Fifteen.
It was in the fifteenth.
Well, that's what I thought I just heard, Candace, I don't know.
Yeah, um, we could look at that email again, but it's coming.
Is there any, a payment plan that will give you two for the first one, unless I have to.
Yeah, okay, well.
I'll copy that.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it's still a lot to ask for in one, one lump sum.
Could you call him today and let him know?
Especially with recent errors.
We'll make some friends too when we get some data.
Um, okay. Um, anything else from staff on this? Okay, um, well, thank you guys. This is informative, it's important and it's interesting. Uh, it's twelve thirteen. We will conclude today's work session at Lake County Board of County Commissioners. Thank you everyone.
Thank you, Chair.